Being in an ensemble is like being on a team. If the numbers on a team dwindle, how can the team be successful? How can we continue to make music together? Has music become such an afterthought, thanks to new academic mandates, that we feel that we can just stick it early in the morning or can just call it good enough? I have also questions about the contract that our students have to sign in order to commit the responsibilities of practicing and attending lessons, rehearsals and concerts. Although I believe that stressing commitment is a good thing, a contract like this questions decisions like deciding to have my child sleep in that extra hour because perhaps she may, I may feel that she is coming down with the cold and maybe that would be the best thing for our child is to help her sleep in. Will my child be penalized for my decision? My systematic putting music on the back burner, it slowly becomes obsolete. Placing ensembles before school won't do just that. It is placing music in low regard and it's slowly sucking the life out of it. I guess my time is up, but I would ask you to reconsider this. Just for a position. Thank you.
Wow, what a different board, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Pam Gibbons, by the way. Mr. Schaefer, I think you did well trying to give your cause because I know your opinion is very usually unoriented. And I also think the board should also do member of understanding. We can do an MOU and you guys can stretch the school day. Be creative and make the school day longer. Do something with the schedule. There's a problem, we all know this, it's been there for years. Let's take care of it. Let's be creative. Teachers out there, wonderful job at the program. Three kids went through, two of whom graduated from here. I can't say enough about Eden. Please, be creative. Thank you.
Anyone else?
You didn't care.
Thank you.
All right, item five, new business resignation. Upon the recommendation of superintendent resignation of GLP principal Daniel Grimm be accepted effective July 6, 2012. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Grimm for her two and a half years of service to the district.
Second.
What is the location period of the resignation?
It's about a week shy of what we could hold or two. Amber made a request if we could do it on a state night, I agree with that.
When do you have to?
No, we, no, we should be able to do that by July 6.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Okay, item two, A2. Upon the recommendation of superintendent the resignation of cleaner Stanley Soleski. I'm sorry if I butchered the name. Be accepted effective May 11, 2012. Board administration wish to thank Mr. Soleski for his 18 years of service to the district.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Okay, A3. Upon the recommendation superintendent the resignation of general mechanic John be accepted effective June 30, 2012. The board and administration wish to thank Mr. Sorebski for his 31 years of service to the district and I apologize.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
A4. Except for that, upon the recommendation superintendent the resignation of special education teacher Christina Hay be accepted effective June 30, 2012. The board and administration wish to thank Ms. Hay for four years of service to the district.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Item A5. Upon the recommendation of superintendent the resignation of bus driver Robert Wood be accepted effective June 22, 2012. The board and administration wish to thank Mr. Wood for his 10 years of service to the district.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Item B, appointments. Appoint summer people personnel. That upon the recommendation of superintendent the following summer people personnel be appointed. A, Mary Rue, Lee Roche, nurse. Darlene Smith, nurse. Colleen Durden, speech therapist. Marissa Fafo, physical education teacher. Thomas Wall, teacher's aide. Judith Razon, teacher's aide. Jamie O'Brien, teacher's aide. Jody Babbitt, occupational therapist. Catherine Musso, special education teacher and substitute aide. Christine Derniger, substitute teacher aide. And Carol Stumpf, substitute teacher and substitute aide.
Second.
Discussion. I've never seen a list of these folks hired in the summer before.
These are all for the special ed summer program. The special ed department has brought in and worked as the budget of doing the summer program as opposed to sending these students out to other locations. We're going to do that here in-house, which is much more cost effective for us.
When was that decided?
Actually, that was decided last fall, I believe. That was what they were working through and as they redid IEPs that the program would be in-house.
Is it the first time around this program, this whole program, or not before?
Correct.
How much is the program about?
I don't have the exact, I don't have the exact numbers.
I don't need the exact numbers either, but it will definitely be less than we pay when we send the students out. The BOSEs are a practice.
How much of that?
I have to look into those.
I'd like to see the numbers outside. I'd motion to table this. I mean, I think it's possible we need to provide services, but this is a whole new program that we're finding out about for the first time tonight. So I'd like to know some more about it, find out how structured, find out what's associated with the way out of the structure. So I do motion to table the summer people personnel.
Excuse me, but we start 22nd and I just simply know we did speak about this before and I had the budget way back when we had the session where we were talking about I asked you to come visit. So I do, but the services start 22nd and your board meetings at night. So if you need the, I can actually give you a bunch of figures right now if you'd like to have that.
I'd like to have something because this is the first time, I believe, for anyone.
I did share those pink rice, spoke with you too. I said we were running the summer, I got, come and visit. We had to get state approval and we got state approval, so.
We get Friday numbers telling us about things. We have board meetings every month. A big program like this to be brought up for approval with the cost attached to it. Now it has to be approved now. I have concern about it. I believe a couple of weeks ago we said anything with a deadline need to be presented a couple of months in advance.
Well, certainly this information has been out for at least the last two weeks and posted on the share point. It is and we have, it isn't something we haven't not been talking about. We've been talking about bringing this in. We talked about, actually, when we were doing the budget that we were going to be bringing in and that was how we were reducing some of the special ed costs. We were going to bring special ed program, summer special ed program back into the district.
And if I can interrupt, we do have to follow the children's IEPs during the summer. So if we don't have it in-house, they will have to go out of that.
I'm not disputing the need for the education. Again, I have a certain process of possibly presenting this, not going much of a.
I remember that it was mentioned, Mrs. Johnson did mention it in a meeting, but it was, it was not a meeting to talk about the program. I don't remember what the, I don't remember what the meeting was, but I do remember hearing about it and, you know, I think we all understand the significance of the program. But I also understand Steve's concern about trying to understand the costs associated with this. This is a brand new thing.
Yeah, and I, I think if you do that, absolutely. And I just wanted to let you know that what we did is we even moved the hours down from 91 and that saved us a lot of money then too because we thought, actually personally I budgeted for 92, but we thought it was too long of a day for kids for our first time doing it. So that saved money too. I have the failures of the cost savings because our BOSEs cost is so high this summer. And I mean, more than I have everything, I have to do.
Certainly, we can do a comparison for you and get you that information. Ultimately, you know, again, we did and I apologize that it was missed in the budget process. If you, if people missed that, but it was, it was there in the budgeting process that we talked about bringing the summer program back in. We will get you that comparison. The concern is, is that the, if we don't approve it, improve it before July 2nd, then we're going to have to place those students outside so that the program can start on time.
Can, can we move on to the other, the other items and then come back to this if you can?
Mrs. Johnson can gather up the cost of the program. I don't know if you've got cost out and compared, but we have all those comparisons.
Yep, I can get pretty close. Just letting you realize too, all these children are kindergarten children. So they have earned out, but I can give you roughly across what they were given. I'll be back.
Okay, item B2. Recommendation motion that upon the recommendation of superintendent Nicholas Pearson be appointed on probation as cleaner effective June 19, 2012 through December 18, 2012. Salary based upon CSEA contract level two, step one.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
B3. Appoint driver education teacher that upon the recommendation of superintendent Ronald Oldman be appointed as a driver education teacher for the 2012-2013 school year per ETA contract.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Item B4. Appoint summer laborer that upon the recommendation of superintendent Forrest Graysear be appointed as a summer laboror effecter August 3, 2012 through August 31, 2012. Salary is $8.55 per hour.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Mike, if I could just interrupt just for one second. If the board's okay with it, you probably would be okay with the rest of these transportation reading A through I or, so if you want to read all of us, it's up to, up to more, but there's a lot of them, so.
That's, that's good because I'll probably butcher their names anyway, so. B5, we got on B, right. B5. Appoint summer bus drivers that upon the recommendation of superintendent the following be appointed as summer bus drivers effective July 2, 2012, A through I.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item B6. Appoint summer bus attendants that upon the recommendation of superintendent the following be appointed as summer bus attendants effective July 2, 2012, A through B.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Item B7. Upon the, appoint summer substitute bus driver that upon the recommendation of superintendent the following be appointed as summer substitute bus drivers effective July 2, 2012, A through J.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Item B8. Appoint summer substitute bus attendants that upon the recommendation of superintendent the following be appointed as summer substitute bus attendants effective July 2, 2012, A through B.
A through Q.
A through B.
Sorry, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Item B9. Appoint summer field trip bus drivers that upon the recommendation of superintendent the following be appointed as summer field trip bus drivers effective July 2, 2012, A through Q.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Item C. Approval ETA memorandum of understanding that upon the recommendation of superintendent the department chairsperson, MOU, be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Item D. Approved APPR plan that upon the recommendation of superintendent the APPR plan required by New York State be approved as presented.
Second.
Let me just briefly take you through this. This document is similar to the code of conduct that we should talk about earlier. It's, it's really a moving target. We actually sat through a webinar this afternoon and it gave us a little bit more information, the information that we're going to have to, we're going to have to address as we go through it. So this is really, we're required by SED to have a plan approved by July 1. This plan will continue to evolve as we work over the summer and we combine that with the administrative plan that has to also be included. We will be sending the information to SED and then they will respond back to us with any additional questions, corrections. And I would assume that based on the fact that they have 700 of these to do, they've hired good numbers of people to do it, that they're going to have several questions. So I would envision the, that this be really, you're approving the first, the first document and as we move through the process, you'll be seeing a number of more versions of this to approve as, as we, as things change and that things evolve in the state. So basically, the document that you have and you've seen is a template that the state has provided for us and that we have dropped in our local measures and the local measures being measures of growth or achievement on district regional BOSEs developed assessments created by grade levels departments or curricular areas. And what that means is that part of the APPR law is that teachers have 20, 20 points worth of their APPR is based on a local assessment. And you have to, you have to choose the local assessment from a list of approved assessments on the list. The item that we chose and negotiated with the association was the local or district regional BOSEs assessment that teachers are already beginning to work on with BOSEs, keeping in mind that teachers cannot develop these on their own. They have to be developed in group or by grade level and regionally. They cannot correct those themselves and they can't administer them. So there's a number of things that go into place. And once, once the assessments are given, in some cases there may be a pre-test and a post-test based on how we're going to use it, whether we're going to use it for achievement or growth. And that is all determined by what do they have to get from the state. And they will get a score for, from 1 to 20 points on their local assessment. And then 60 points, which is the evaluation process, and we've heard Mr. Schaefer alluded to that a little bit, that teachers will be observed and as well as observed, as well as creating a binder of evidence. And this is all going to be based on the Danielson rubric, which is an educational rubric system. Again, those are, those rubrics, we have to choose a rubric and agree to a rubric with the association that was state approved. So we've chosen Danielson and all of the observations and visitations to classrooms and the binder will be based on the Danielson, the Danielson rubric. And then that score will be given based on, yes, based on their, their work and each one of those pieces there scored at a different level and there'll be a total of 60 points for that. Correct, correct. And again, as I said before, I know, I talked to a couple of board members today about it and the fact that, and what I'd like to be able to do is we'll approve it tonight and I will be back in September and/or October to do a detail. Once we have some feedback back from the state as to what it, what it exactly is and what the questions are, what we may have to refine. Because going through it detail by detail, we don't have all the details yet even from the state exactly how we have to handle certain items. And the, I can tell you something today that by September and by the time we get feedback from the state may change. So I would prefer that we, just as the same as the code of conduct, that we're, we're going to come back and revisit this again. You've got another opportunity to, to approve that and before we do a posting of that on our own website. But at least that way we will have all of our guidance from the state and have some, a draft into the state to give us feedback as to are we on track or do we have to correct anything? So that's kind of where we're at with the teacher APPR at this point. The other 20 point, 20% is provided by the state. And that's by virtue of the state assessment or by a student learning objective that a teacher will have to write either based on the state assessment. For example, at high school, they have not created a system yet to give us all of the state numbers. So they're going to have to write, teachers are going to have to write a student learning objective based on their region's exam if it exists. And if the region's exam doesn't exist, we have an option of using the local or regionally produced assessment, a third party assessment that's approved by the state of New York. We can use either one of those, but that'll be a growth measure and the state will actually help us determine what that, what that score is going to be.
Is this, will it be signed off by the ETA?
Correct. And it is signed off by the ETA. And then we have, we also have a group of assurances as we continue to build the plan that we all have to sign off next week, probably, given as that approved today.
Is this effective July 1, for July 2nd?
It's effective, it's effective right now for July 1. And the reason to do that, it gives us an opportunity to begin planning, for example, and training individuals on what a student learning objective is, how to write one, what assessments we're working on, beginning the writing process of the local originally, regional assessments. We need that, we need that ultimately in place. There's a, as I said before, there's a, I call it soft date as of July 1. But they're, they're talking about four to six weeks for them to be reviewed and then there will, certainly will be questions and add up patients that may have to be made. And then there's another reappraisal of that that could take four to six weeks. And we need to have in place so that we're training people come September and this is exactly what they're doing because ultimately they have to pre-test. They have to pre-test. If it doesn't help us to pre-test in January, we want to pre-test in September and have a concluding assessment at the end of the year. So we need to start the year moving forward, even though we may have to continue tweaking as we go on as we get more information from the state.
Any questions, David? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Item E. Approve bus use for Eden Recreation that upon the recommendation of superintendent transportation by two school buses be approved. The Eden Recreation Department from their summer field trip to Marion Lake July 20, 2012 as per the attached request.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? How much do you get back?
We bill the entire amount there. We bill an hourly rate for salary benefits of our drivers and we also bill a mileage rate.
For our state or cost rates?
Correct.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Item F. Approve bus use for Eden Indicare that upon the recommendation of superintendent transportation by a school bus be approved for Eden Recreation Department for their 2012 summer field trip program as per the attached request.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Item G. Approved district code of contact that upon, or conduct, excuse me, that upon the recommendation of superintendent the district code of conduct for the 2012-2013 school year be approved.
Second.
Discussion.
Just to remind you, you'll be seeing another version of this come the fall.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Item H. Award bid number 1055 office slash classroom supplies that upon the recommendation of superintendent bid 1055 office classroom supplies be awarded as follows. National arts and school supply, $1,941.17. Office depot, $1,0237.17. Quill corporation, $3,699.36. And school specialty, $4,240.67.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Item I. Trash removal that upon the recommendation of superintendent bid 1056 for trash removal for the period of July 1, 2012 through June 3, 2013 be awarded to Allied Weight Services of North America LLC of Swallows. $20 per pickup per dumpster, $20 per additional pickup and $10.72 per pickup for cardboard recycling.
Second.
Discussion.
This is actually less than we're paying right now. They beat their.
That's good. It's nice to hear. Let's go down.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Item J. Gym floor refurnish, refinishing that upon the recommendation of superintendent bid 1057 gym floor refinishing be awarded as follows. Matrix for $7,511.
Second.
Discussion. How do we put this bid out? Would we run after this?
Yeah, all these, there's a little notice in the sun.
Sun? It's the same, it's the sheriff's question.
Well, yeah, we have, should we get actually bid? We had the yard from Rochester that bid this time and the other ones did not bid. Reed Business Hall, I emailed them the bid packet.
Something better since this morning, I'm circling.
And which gym floor, all three of you are just.
Yeah, all three. Yeah, if you know of any of the vendors, please bring them to my adoption. We'll keep them on the list.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Item K. Parking lot strip, stripping. That upon the recommendation superintendent bid 1058 parking lot crack.
Should we strip? Sorry, you strip that.
Striping, striping.
It's the stripping at the top and it's, it's cracking bottom. It's only striping. Make sure we have that. Don't be dead in that mix.
Parking lot crack filling be awarded as follows. Tabon South Town Ceiling LLC for $1,675.
Second.
Discussion. I was confused, it says striping and then it says parking lot.
Crack filling should be striping.
That's what we, that's what we're correcting was the, it should be parking lot stripping.
It talks about parking lot.
Correct.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Item L. Approved shared service agreement that upon recommendation of superintendent the shared service agreement and the memorandum of understanding for shared transportation supervised you with the Springville School District be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
A la carte price. Item M. Upon the recommendation of superintendent the 2012-2013 a la carte price list and student meal prices be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Item N. Authorized transfer fund to capital fund that upon the recommendation of superintendent $67,217 we transfer for unassigned fund balance to the capital fund. These funds are needed to finance Excel Phase 2 Backflow Preventer project as previous Excel funds have been applied for and certified by NYSE and are no longer available for our use.
Second.
Discussion.
Was this being paid for by excess that we added Excel? I thought we had some outstanding.
We did. We did have some money available.
Right.
Using a previous project. Let's say that, we applied for the entire amount based on what we thought the project was going to come in at. The project actually came in lower due to exchange orders, this is more than what we needed. So state that certified the amount we applied for. Our cost was less than what was certified, so they say we lose the difference.
Okay.
We are going to, we have the opportunity in the last couple of weeks to do a little more checking. We're not alone in this. We're going to look at pursuing, whether we're successful or not is another story. We're participating, pursuing this through our local legislators.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Should we go back to?
Yep. I also have done.
And I want to, oh, that's really good. There's a bit of a question about my students. But, um, I just wanted to let you know that this wasn't a budget. I had a meeting for the budget was approved before I could post those positions. And then I had to go interview for the positions, and so I tried to get it into the time limit for your approval. Okay, what I have is our overall cost for positions, which is our salary benefits, is twenty-one thousand four hundred and eighty. And that's for a six-week program. Yeah, twenty-one, four hundred and eighty. And six weeks from ninety-one. And then it was July second to August. And then, um, if you, if I have these students, which I just want to speak to you, just to you, these were paid in, were coming from, it was paid out this year. So we started this. So that's what they were. So there's not a lot of basis. So when I went to the BOSI's, if I had a BOSI's similar program, it would be twenty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. For them. Now, just to let you know, both, see, either BOSI's or I staff, staff needs, I explain this during board numbers, we get the money back. I said, and then to the state, we get the money back. It's all summer school tuition. Either which way I go, we get that. Yeah, it's called summer school tuition.
BOSI's doesn't aid special replacements. Do we give it to our staff?
A couple of other things I don't, probably don't know about transportation too. The transportation is less because the students, most of the students are very close to the GLP, so with limited time, I would have to send them off farther to East Door or North Cal if they went to a BOSI program. Or, and the last thing I wanted to let you know real quick is, one of the students who we are, is tuition-based. This student is from Frontier. Frontier pays us because we have a great program. He's in the VHS, and we are making money actually. So those are the facts. And the reason I got against it, because it was supposed to start twice, like, the ninth, he says twice, like, and I have all these families that trust me that their kids get to go to the school they're from, and they're used to that, so I'm sorry.
Okay, that's a good point. How many students are there in the program?
Uh.
Six, six with the frontier?
Yeah. And so Frontier did it. You actually, actually, in the summer, you're not up during the school year because now I'm having.
During the summer, um, professors are dropping their waivers at eighty percent, so our responsibility is only twenty percent.
With the reduced hours, I think I looked at the list, it came out Friday, and the list is different from Friday to today. Or whatever the, the meeting proposed.
Uh, those were all people.
Because it looks different, I thought there was Aaron Abel on this, and she's not only.
Oh, no, Sam, Aaron Abel was serving staff nurse. But you know what might be different is to JPA, we, we need to improve, um, a sub, so basically, I, I'll be there every day, but if somebody gets sick, they need a sub, so we have to especially substitute for the sub. So, um, JPA, we want better, the better ways. And like, is it two nurses or three? But, and we have a safety, like I told you, our safety nurse. We need to not budget any summer power for nurses, like, so instead we did this, and we did reverse, and they get all their summer nurse time from then. Today they're all physical, so, so even though they're gonna be working and staying there watching the kids, they're still gonna get all the other work done. So that was part of that.
So is this reversible or able because this is a special education program, or is it because it's a summer program?
High class students.
Also, we also get the same stack lead on our outside placements and our special education kids.
Oh, yeah, I have a lot of.
No, I guess what I'm asking is, so if we were to have a summer program for JPA students?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't get that kind of. We get none and we can charge, we can charge up to ten dollars.
And just so you know, like, still have some students out of district in private placements, and BOSI's placements for the summer too, like, for two bits. Those are all stackable.
If this is a hundred percent reversible by the state, why would you cut back to one block?
Uh, well, because. How much they can handle, I mean, and it's summer, and it'd be different, so, and it's our first year. I don't know that, so. Uh, we have three, three classrooms in this district that are kids that really could be around. This is my first attempt at doing it. If it works, we have Mrs. Durringer up at the elementary. Those kids, in her classroom, sending out to BOSI's. Now, if you're a parent, you really kind of want your child to stay where they're at. So I'll work on it next year.
This is all, this is all the kids that really would be around right now?
Yeah, they'll be in first grade. Prior to that. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Josh.
I currently have a motion on the table to approve those, those positions. Any further discussion about that? All favor?
Aye.
Okay, the results of the budget vote, we had five hundred and fifteen yes votes and two hundred and forty-four no votes. The results for the Board of Education, Scott Henderson, five hundred and four votes, Barbara Henry, four hundred and seventy votes, Michael Burns, four fifty-nine, and Robert Reed, three twenty-four. Mr. Henderson and Mr. Burns took office immediately, and Mrs. Henry will be sworn in on July second. Baggett and Lurito Baggett completed their system testing as part of the internal audit process. As soon as I get their finalized report, I will send it out to you and set up an audit committee meeting. Auditors from Toski Schaefer, our external auditors, are here this week to do their audit planning and internal control evaluation. Uh, they will be here sometime in August to do their field work. The food service bid and the bid for the emergency masonry repairs at the elementary have gone out. The bid opening will be on June twenty-sixth, and we hope to get the bids to bring to you to award on July second. Okay, and I have the four-year fiscal plan showing our estimated revenues and expenditures for fund balances for DAPSA. We should be breaking about even based on all the information I know right now. We received some additional invoices which are not accounted for, this make a lot. So we're about to even break. And I have some reserve and fund balance projections for you. And I know you asked me to give you some scenarios with the unrestricted fund balances. You will have to transfer money from assigned appropriated fund balances.
Future inquiries, future copies, or decos?
Okay. The assigned appropriated fund balances will have to be reduced by one point six million because you, during the budgeting process, you wanted to use six hundred nineteen thousand of the job offset. And that's shown on the first sheet. Probably the best two places to put it would be the retirement contribution reserve and the unemployment insurance reserve. On the retirement contributions, there are funds, employee retirement. So we can fund the max, you know, each year for capable four years. Well, if we budgeted six hundred thousand dollars for employee retirement, we need to take six hundred thousand from this reserve. So in this first scenario, the unrestricted fund balance would be about five point nine percent of the two thousand twelve, thirteen budget. We need, we are supposed to buy last day within four percent. Four percent or less. So your next scenario, transfers the money from unrestricted fund balance and puts it in either those two reserves, unemployment, or retirement contribution, and it'll get you to the four percent. And I know when we spoke last time, it asked about, you know, higher percentages, so those are on the next big page. Yeah, and you can do, you know, you can put it where you want, but that, I think, gives you the most what you want. The auditors were right about your launch. So on the second page, bottom, this scenario is four and a half percent.
You want to finalize this if you notice correctly? Okay, I just have a few things. Just like to congratulate following students for being selected for the superintendent's art collection. Alyssa Ramirez, grade twelve, Sawyer Oberhoff, grade seven, Sarah Banco from grade five, and Angela Lume from grade two. I apologize for not having that work here. Barbara was out today, so Heather and all of it together. We'll try, we'll try to get that out and hand it to the display for another meeting. The Raiders Respond Day, our community service day, was recognized this past week by the town in town proclamation, and also by Erie County School Boards for their, in their collaboration award last Thursday. So again, thank you to the community, thank you to the staff who helped to put that together. It was an outstanding, another outstanding day. Also, so you, so you know, and I think you, I've shared this in my Friday memo, that the teacher center is looking for space, the Erie, should talk about the teacher center. They have been in and looked at the spaces that are available at the GLP, and hopefully will know in the next week or so whether they're interested in housing the teacher center here in the district, which is, would just be a huge asset to our, our staff. And I think that's all that I have, other than the fact that I'd ask the board to, please continue to keep Barbara and your family, your thoughts and prayers. They have some difficult decisions to make in the coming days, so please just continue to remember that.
I think you said that wrong, opposed calendar dates with the school board meetings for next year, you're gonna have to take a look at that. Or be used to the major issues of that, or something like that, but, um, general, it's pretty good.
I'm gonna assume that, just based on emails today, that on January, January and February, we'd like to go with the fourteenth and the eleventh, or Mondays? And the only other days that we, we needed to talk about, one of the days that we talked about, had it listed in August, and I, I just hand, handwriting on that page. And I know that they didn't work, for whatever, I probably gave the original to somebody who has my note, my notes now, but. There's a proposal of going, going to, for one of those days, goal setting and to move to August fourth. That's not gonna work for administrators other than Mr. Graff and I are available. The rest of the administrative staff already have. That we, that weekend planned for vacations one, one way or the other. So we could possibly look at, and I know Mondays are better, if we could possibly look at maybe the twentieth and the twenty-seventh, which are two Monday in August. That might be helpful. You gave us the twenty-seventh, it was okay, it was okay. And if we could do the twentieth, that would at least give us two, two evening sessions as opposed to one morning, we won't. Um, but two, two Mondays in a, in a row, it's kind of at the end of August, and most administrative staff have, have their vacations built in, they're back. Prepare for school by then, so those are pretty, pretty safe weeks.
Would we have the results of the state testing by then?
No, that's, that would be just, that would be goal, that would just be goal setting. The actual, I also suggested that we do something with, with data, and I suggested the twenty-ninth. And Stevie had wanted to do it at a, at a public meeting, which is, which is great. What we thought we would do, if we could do it, still do it on that Saturday morning, the twenty-ninth, it works for everyone. And then do a full, full presentation, once the board has had an opportunity to review all that information at the actual report, of everything, everything that we have. We don't anticipate until early September having all the state information back.
Actually have the data though, right? It's not traditional plus data.
No, they, they actually, we have, we have actually nothing now. We, we can't keep any of the information that we used to keep in getting, we have some raw scores, but we have no idea right now even where the, trying to convert those for AIS is extremely difficult because of the, um, we don't know what the cut points are gonna be, we don't know how they're gonna convert to, um, the, the index scores, so. And then what, where, where the cut point will be. We don't anticipate any, any of that, even, even unofficially until sometime, what they're saying, mid to late August, but have given themselves a September deadline. So if, I hate to commit to not have the specifics and say we're gonna meet and not have done. I think as far as the goal review and going back, I think what Tristan is asking, I think much of the goal setting will, will be looking at the goals that we've already set and where, where we're at and revisiting as to whether some of them are long-term or whether we might just continue those. At least the student G-bid ones have some long-term basis for that, and then we do that on all the other ones, we have some information.
Right, and to know whether or not we met the goals that we already set.
Correct.
Maybe we did the first meeting on the twenty-seventh, then we have a data meeting that we can finalize goals and set upon that.
February's okay with, if February's okay with August twenty-seventh. Can we?
So it's not the twentieth and the twenty-seventh, it's just the twenty-seventh?
She suggested we do the twenty-seventh, and then we'll schedule a Monday. I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest again, I would suggest that we do, at least schedule the twenty-ninth, but if we can do it Saturday morning. Saturday morning, September, September. You know, and if we can adjust what we have earlier, we'll come back to you and say, you know, we have everything we need, and we schedule somewhere. At least we have it on the calendar, people can start, we can plan.
Question, if we want to do the detailed data presentation at a regular board meeting, or if we want to do a separate meeting somewhere?
I'm just suggesting we do, we do, we do both. We do it all, and if there's questions or things that we'd like to see, add to the, the formal public presentation that we have.
We'll see how much we're gonna be doing in terms of people in this. Not making substantive changes, what we've earned, it might not be a meaningful public turn. Can we decide in August?
Yeah, this will be public meetings around the, the data, all the, the sore data coming back from the state. So question, if we want to do that as part of regular board meeting, social event, or if we want to do that as a separate, separate session?
It could be, it could be like, it could be like.
The, um, the information I believe isn't that that is still gonna be in Barbara, probably in summer, September, and October, so I don't.
October?
Yeah.
So we may want to plan, we may want to. So we may want to plan, we may want to plan a day of Saturday that we, we, it's in Barbara, that's gives us an opportunity to, to discuss it, but not share a couple things. We'll have to wait till that comes out.
We have to do a public hearing and a quota panel too, which then we can combine those and do the same thing.
Let's hold the Saturday and the twenty-ninth.
That's all, I'm, so I'm suggesting if we just hold it, hold it, we can at least mark it up in the calendar and.
So.
Now, maybe seven, six, six P M.
Six P M. Okay. That's working, you guys make it six P M.
And then the twenty-ninth, whatever, eight o'clock is better.
Eight A M, Saturday morning, eight A M. All right, let's see if we find a date in, based on time. It's all our time, twenty-seventh, we'll find our date.
Yeah. Maybe we'll, maybe we'll pay that, we can do, combine those two. Thank you.
School board convention's coming up. And was there?
I think it's, uh, the end of June, that, um, if we register by, in June, there's a discount. I think it's by, I think it's by June thirtieth, and then, um, in addition, if we register six people, we get seven for free. So it's in our best interest if we know, if we have an idea of who might be going, um, it would, it would save on costs.
Well, I want everybody to think about if you want to go. October again to Rochester this year, think about if you want to go. Let me know, we'll see how many people are, are assigned, how much should we go again. You know, a lot of those.
It's really valuable, so.
We don't get much training in this job, and that's a place where we learn a lot a couple days, so, um, so I think a lot of, let me know, we can, we can, we can register everybody down.
I'll try to look, uh, tomorrow and get everyone else, get everyone in the dates. Present a reminder.
Uh, the other thing is, let me know, there's areas you're interested for committees. Uh, pre-ord meeting, we'll, we'll start setting committees. We have a, we'll have a full board again, set of committees, we have areas like, uh, structure and audit and legal policy and, um, different things to think about areas. You have a true story, you think you should have a committee, and let me know, I'll put a draft together, let's see if you go, I think, in July.
Would it help to put out a list of the existing committees and what they are so that the new folks have an idea of what we have?
If you think some of those are making sense, great. Uh, next board meeting is July second, pre-ord meeting here at seven P M. Anything else, uh, anything they want to talk about?
Yeah, I don't know if this is appropriate area to talk about, but I'll bring it up. I was approached, um, by a parent about possibly bringing, and I think the only modified team sport that is not, uh, currently supported by the district is LaFrost, uh, by LaFrost.
Correct.
Um, they asked, um, if it's something that the board considered not moving that back into the district for support instead of being outsourced.
I believe the board initially approved it, being that, uh, boosters were continuing to fund it. They pulled the.
Those agreements.
Correct. And it wasn't, it wasn't ever in, it was, so, we're going to be bringing it back. It was never, so it was never, it was never.
Before, it was, uh.
In order to, in order to have, it was a request made to have it in the board at that time, the agreement was it would be funded outside, and I think, I mean, certainly that's something that could be discussed at budget time. Okay.
Any else? All right, uh, let's see, with that, uh, I'm making the motion to enter executive session to discuss semester tenure, superintendent contract, and then contract interim employment conference.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, maybe adding building use contract to.
And building use contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries. I also would hope anybody has any opposition to running for our under joysticks session, executive session, so we at our next meeting voting on some of these topics, I'm abstaining, but, uh, I think it's currently for the information, anybody have a issue with that?
No.
No. Um, that for adjourned, thank you for coming, everyone.